Hello and welcome candidates to this virtual candidate forum. I'm Jean Dunham, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this forum. Eleanor Levin from the League will be our timekeeper. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Join us, we can use your time and your talent. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them. Our schedule of questions comes from the League's members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will not be time for rebuttal. We are scheduled for one hour. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the forum. Our timekeeper will use cards to alert candidates when time is about up and when it is up. The special election is scheduled for Tuesday, September 29th. We have four candidates running for one seat on the Corleville City Council. Our candidates are Mr. Barry Bedford, Mr. Nick Burrell, Ms. Hi Quinn, Ms. Heather Sitzinger. Let's begin with your two-minute opening statements, and we'll start with you, Mr. Bedford. Please unmute your mic.
I'm sorry, thank you. My name is Barry Bedford, and I'm running for the city council seat in the special election on September 29th. I've been a resident of Corleville for 47 years. My wife Roxy and I have been married for 46 years. We've raised three children and currently have 13 grandchildren in the area. I've been a police officer for the city of Corleville for 43 years, and the last 28 of those years I served as a chief of police. Since retiring in 2017, I've obtained certification as an executive life coach and leadership consultant and trainer. I've also acted as an expert witness in the area of police practice in litigation that's been filed before the federal courts. For the past three years, I've also volunteered in the southeast area of Iowa City working with people who are homeless, food insecure, and low income, and helping them to obtain food and shelter, provided personal coaching, budgetary assistance, and met many of their needs by helping them to find resources within the community and coordinate with those resources. I'm also on the Salvation Army Board and help serve with evening community meals at times. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Iowa, a master's degree in public affairs from the University of Iowa, and I think I bring a lot of skills and abilities to the council and believe that I can serve the state of Corleville more as I do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Burrell?
Thanks, excited to be here. So my name's Nick Burrell. I decided to run for the city council because I thought it was time to refresh voice, new perspective. I've owned a business for the past three years. I've lived in Corleville seven since college. I'm 28 years old. So with that, I have a whole different way of thinking about some of the issues that we see every day. You know, the best part of running a business too is the relationships you build. And I've seen different people, all different walks of life, come in leaving feeling accomplished, but more importantly, feeling unified. And if I can see it there, there's no reason why we can't take that same thinking to the community level and fix some of our issues and bring a sense of diversity, understand that everyone has more in common than we like to think. If we take that thinking, we can bring everyone together with that. So I'm excited for this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. And next, Ms. Quinn? Unmute your mic.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting, and thanks to everyone for joining us tonight. I love Corleville, the place I have called home for the last 20 years. This is where I chose to put down roots, and this is where my husband and I are currently raising our four beautiful children. Together, we have spent countless hours playing in its park, biking its trail, waiting in its creek, attending storytime in its library, and devoting ourselves to its school and community organization. In 1993, when I was 16 years old, my family and I immigrated to the United States from Vietnam. We came empty-handed, fleeing turmoil and poverty, to a new land that offered us security and opportunity. Through hard work and perseverance, I simultaneously earned an ABA in economics from the University of Iowa and a cosmetology license from Le James. I chose to put root down here in Johnson County, where I have proudly lived in a mobile home community, a subsidiary apartment, a duplex, and a single-family home. I have held many roles in my community. Currently, I serve as the community project coordinator with the Corleville Food Pantry, where I get to mount my passion for food, justice, and relationship buildings. I have also spent my time as a peer educator at Corleville Central Elementary School. I am an immigrant, a woman of color, a full-time mom, and an active community volunteer. In these roles, I have seen firsthand both Corleville's strengths and its shortcomings. I look forward to talk about both this evening. I believe, together, we can create a better Corleville for all who wants to call it home. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Sitzinger?
Hello. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for hosting this forum today. My name is Heather Sitzinger. I'm looking to become more active in our community, and I'm interested in serving our city council. I was born and raised on a farm in Mahaska County. I attended college at William Penn, and then I took a job in St. Louis, Missouri, where I lived for several years. There, I was active in my community and helped facilitate the development and completion of a dog park in my local neighborhood park. I moved to Corleville about three years ago, and I realized that I missed being involved in the community. I currently work at Hy-Vee in Corleville with the Isles Online Department. We've seen exponential growth at Hy-Vee in the Isles Online Department due to the pandemic, and I feel fortunate to work there and to be able to help people get their food and pick up their groceries safely. But this pandemic has shown us that not all families and all companies and businesses have fared well. We need, I believe, we need to diversify our city's income through more jobs and varied industries, which will ultimately help each person in Corleville and strengthen the foundation of our city.
Thank you. We will now proceed to questions. Recall that you have one minute to respond to each question, and we'll begin with you, Mr. Burrell. Here's our first question. What particular talents and interests will you contribute to the Corleville City Council if elected?
Timer started, like right away? All right, cool. So one of the big interests I have is bringing everyone together. And I also have a huge interest in obviously wellness. Owning a fitness facility, that's one of my big interests. And it's an interest to me because I understand and have seen it, how wellness projects to people's lives, and how if they feel better, they're more confident. And if they're more confident, they're able to do more. When they're able to do more, they see that projecting to their business as well with that. And so that's one of my big interests I do have is wellness for people, and then wellness for the community as a whole.
Thank you. And Ms. Quinn?
May I please hear the question again? Thank you.
Sure. What particular talents and interests will you bring to the Corleville City Council if elected?
I have given this decision a lot of thoughts. I have served my community over the last 20 years in many different ways, and now I realize that I am ready to serve in a new way. I have heard countless stories about lack of resources and support right here in Corleville. And for a while now, I have sensed that there are policies that are not serving all its residents. As we faced new and difficult challenges, I became more compelled than ever to take the next step into service. Volunteering and listening no longer seemed like it's enough. So I decided I needed to become one of the decision-maker with the power and influence to make positive real changes for our most vulnerable neighbors. I can do this because I work hard, I am a problem solver, and I do my homework. And I know how to apply these skills to ensure our local government represent all voice at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Sitzinger? Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. I believe as far as talents go, I bring the ability to juggle many projects at one time without dropping the ball. My interests lie in making sure that this community enjoys its diversity. It is a very diverse community, and I think we need to further explore that and expand upon it. And so that, expanding the diversity, is one of my great interests.
Thank you. And Mr. Bedford?
Thank you. Well, during my career, I believe I have developed some personal strengths that I can bring to the council and the city and serve them well. Some of those strengths are problem-solving, conflict management and resolution, excellent fiscal management. I developed and kept a 28-years' worth of city budgets in the black and in balance, effective communications, listening, and high personal integrity. My concerns, of course, have to do with fiscal stability and community trust. And I really believe that a lot of that is going to come through real relationships, honest conversations, and genuine acts of service. So I think we can serve well that way.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question, and we'll begin with you, Ms. Quinn. Here's the question. How would you, as a city council member, reach out to diverse populations within the city of Corleville?
Sorry, the mute button just always get me. Our community is rich in diversity. And as an immigrant, I understand how challenging it can be to adapt to the culture here in Iowa. I've worked closely with community members from many cultural backgrounds as a peer educator, a community volunteer, and in my current role with the Corleville Food Pantry. And one of my favorite projects that I manage at the Food Pantry is our Global Community Dinner, where we invite community members from various backgrounds to prepare food that are culturally meaningful to them, and then share them with the broader community. So in our first such event, over 30 cultural wards represented, and more than 500 community members join us to share a meal. To organize this requires cultural understanding, tactful, respectful communication, and I have proved that I am committed to making sure everyone feel welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sitzinger, the same question?
I feel the best way to reach out to various communities is to talk to them. Go where they're at. If they're at the grocery store, talk to them. Find out what they care about, what they're hoping to see from the city. And I've been doing that recently here in Corleville. I did that constantly in St. Louis. So just going to them and talking with them, that's the best way to reach out to them and ask them how they're doing. Ask them what they would like to see done, what would help them feel more comfortable. Just talk to them.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford? Mr. Bedford, are you muted?
I apologize for that. In my role as chief of police, I had many opportunities to develop relationships with members of different cultural communities, resolve issues of concern that they had. And I want to stress "resolve" because I think we always came to a resolution. Really try and listen, understand. I think that one of the issues in reaching out to our diverse community effectively, though, is to build that trust. And the trust between cities, or government, and police, and the community has certainly gone down. And so we have to develop the trust. We have to be intolerant of discrimination and racism and any type of thing like that. But we also have to come together and talk in a temperate way and try and resolve those solutions by building relationships.
Jean, I believe you are muted. We all get to make that mistake, don't we? I'm so sorry, Mr. Burrell. Let me begin again. I will ask that question for you again. How would you, as a city council member, reach out to diverse populations within the city of Corleville?
Cool. So one thing I would have is the experience of being on both sides of it. So growing up, you know, you understand that race is kind of an ideology and an idea. If you don't act a certain way, you don't fit in. So there's like Black communities I didn't fit in. There's white communities I didn't fit in. And you kind of get a whole different perspective of it. And you understand that you need to bridge that gap and talk to them and share those experiences with them and understand that. So I'm lucky to have one of the sheriffs, like being one of my really good friends. Different deputies are really good friends. And you understand that there's a bridge that needs to be built. But that bridge is only built, unfortunately, with diversity. You need diverse people to build that bridge that understands that race is an ideology or an idea, and you need to gap that. Like, that's how I would do that. Bring that diversity to the table and bring the two sides together and make them realize that they have more in common than they like to think sometimes.
Thank you. Ms. Sitzinger, you'll be first in the next question. And that question is, what actions would you specifically recommend to address any social or racial inequities in Corleville?
I think it starts with conversation. Everything has to start with a conversation. That's how you build trust. That's how you build those bonds and trust. And so first, we have to start with conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford?
Yes, I believe conversations are good, but I think that conversations lead to relationships. And relationships and understanding, as Nick said, is important in developing a relationship where you can build trust. Then reaching out and listening to what the people's perceptions and problems have been, finding ways where we can come together and try and mitigate those situations. Certainly, I know there's been a lot of suggestions out there concerning the police department, internationally anyway. And certainly, people are looking at ways to change that. There's always room for improvement. There's always things that we can do to make things better. And we have to get people at the table who will talk and rationalize and be committed to not just solving a specific problem, but doing so in an ongoing fashion.
Thank you. And Mr. Burrell?
All right, so steps were put in place. We always talk about affordable housing, but if we do affordable housing and don't address the inequalities that put people in affordable housing, it's not really going to fix the issue. So we're talking to the police chief of Corleville, Johnson County. You understand a lot of people in affordable housing can't read or write. So due to systematic repression, where it's illegal for Blacks to read and learn to write at a certain point. So why don't we look at that problem? Help them know job opportunities. Develop programs that get them GED, different opportunities, provide them skills. You have the new Guide Center getting built in Johnson County that provides mental health services. So you limit the interaction that people have with the police. You're able to build trust, get people to help their need. So that would be some of the solutions I would look at, fixing the underlying solution, not just reacting to the problem.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Quinn?
Thank you. I believe that no one should have to look over their shoulder when they leave their home. And all who call Corleville home should be able to live safe, healthy, and dignify lives regardless of race or class. Here is how I think Corleville can advance racial and economic justice. We need to establish a citizen-led police review board with a strong representation from communities of color because we need transparency and accountability. We need to establish funds to support businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and other people of color. And we also need to invest in vital community resources to help reduce poverty, racism, violence, and injustice, and advocate for a livable wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford, we're shifting gears. Could you share your thoughts on the use of tax incremental financing tips? Mr. Bedford, unmute.
I thought I was unmuted, I apologize.
No worries, you can get it again.
The question was, what are my thoughts on TIF?
Yes.
Well, as you know, and I think everybody here knows, the city of Corleville has used TIF extensively over the years. And we currently have, not just because of TIF, but we currently also have a $342 million-plus deficit. And I mean debt. Not all because by TIF, but much of the TIF zones have been developed because of and resulted in that. So the TIF funding oftentimes does take away from other entities in the community. I know that the school district and others have been frustrated at times because of the fact that when it's somewhere is TIFed, then they don't get the income for that for a period of up to 20 years or more. So I think we have to continue to look at that very carefully. I think we have to look at our economic spending and fiscal use and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Burrell? Could you share your thoughts on the use of tax increment financing tips?
Yeah, so I think tips are really interesting. For one, I think transparency is huge on tips. So with all the people I know in Corleville and learning about TIFs, a lot of people don't understand them or don't realize what they even do. So like a transparency at the front of the tip would be great, like understanding what they do, how they help people, how they can hurt. Just like everything, we preach moderation. Like, if you can find a moderate balance, like tip is great for development long-term down the road. Like, if we didn't have COVID and other things happening, you would see all these TIFs start to pay off, especially around the arena, IRL. But just like everything else, you get a little too deep, we got to find a way out. And now it's just about being adaptive, creative, thinking of new ways to do. So we really need to make sure those businesses succeed with those TIFs so we get that property tax back.
Thank you. Ms. Quinn?
TIF, when the name Corleville come up, TIF has also always come up. So TIF had its advantage and disadvantage, I believe. And because of TIF, Corleville has seen a huge economic growth in the last 20 years. Our local economy has suffered greatly because of COVID-19, and we need to do everything that we can to bring our economy back by preserving and creating jobs and bringing in tax revenue. Going forward, I want to make sure that every new development project, whether funded by TIF or not, benefit everyday people, not just the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sitzinger?
Not a big fan of TIF. I feel it's often overused and abused, and our debt that the city of Corleville has suggests that we have done both. It is a great tool when used properly and sparingly, but when it's abused, it shifts the financial burden to the citizens of the city, and that's what Corleville has done.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with you, Mr. Burrell. Here's the question. What steps would you take to address budget or financial stability issues in Corleville given the current downturn of the local economy related to COVID?
So I think there's a big one that is constantly overlooked. We're the only county in Iowa that does not have, I call it the luxury consumer tax, but as 1% tax on restaurants, the mall, stuff like that. Unfortunately, the issue with that is some of the cities can't all get along to decide how to manage that and split that. But what you could do, it could bring a lot in, and then you set some aside to help the people that need it most out of that. With the higher tourist traffic that's going to come in with the arena, because COVID can't last forever, hopefully. But with the arena and everything coming in, that could be a huge 1% that will not only help local businesses, but will also greatly help the people that need it most if we mandate a percentage of that is used for the people that need it most.
Thank you. Ms. Quinn?
Thank you. Our local economy has suffered greatly at the hand of COVID-19. The hospitality and retail industry have been hit the hardest, and we have seen a huge loss in construction's job. As a community, we must do everything we can to stimulate and diversify our economy, whether it's be coming up with strategies to help our small businesses keep their door open or collaborating with public and private partners to create jobs and bring in tax revenue. We need to identify and prioritize our community's needs to allocate funds accordingly. But most importantly, as a local government, we must do everything in our power to limit the spread of the disease and ensure that support is available for all of Corleville. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sitzinger?
Can you repeat the question?
I surely can. What steps would you take to address the budget or financial stability issues in Corleville given the current downturn of the local economy related to COVID-19?
Well, Corleville's been a hospitality town since the 1950s, and I would like to see, while that will definitely continue with the addition of the Extreme Arena, I would like for us to court other businesses. Recently, we lost Geico to North Liberty, and it's very unfortunate. We have a wonderful business park, and I wish we could have kept Geico, and we need to court companies such as Geico that bring in jobs that pay a living wage or more. And so I think if we would diversify our business and not rely so heavily on hospitality, that would really help any budget shortfalls that would come in the future.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Bedford?
Well, as I mentioned before, that Corleville has a $340 million debt right now. And that coupled with the COVID-19 virus and the shutdown of much of the local economy and the business community, in addition to the recent directo, has really put a strain on the city's budget and finances as well as the local business community. I think it's really important to try and deal with a plan, a specific plan. I know the city's had a plan in the past, but we're going to have to readjust that plan. I think it's one of the most important things we have to do. We do have to try and anticipate getting new businesses in. Good, well-paying businesses that can help the people here have that living wage. And I think drawing them in and supporting, bringing them here, not necessarily giving them money, but at the same time encouraging them, showing them what Corleville is worth and what we can provide for them as a community is good. And I do agree with the fact that sometimes we do too much with hospitality.
Thank you. Our next question, Ms. Quinn, you'll be first. Here's the question. What recommendations do you have for making improvements to public transit in Corleville?
Thank you. My husband depends on public transportation to get to and from work every day. So I believe that all of our neighbors So I believe that all of our neighbors should have the support they need to safely and efficiently travel to work, to medical appointments, to the grocery store, and other central destination. So my priority for enhancing community mobility are, we need to collaborate with neighboring city and the University of Iowa to offer a universal bus pass. We need to strengthen our public transit system by adding night and Sunday routes. And we also need to put in place more bus shelter because we have one right now in Corville, and that need to change. We need to develop strategy to make Corville more bike-friendly because we have community members who bike to work. So we need to ensure their safety, and we need to ensure that pedestrians have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Saitzinger. Public transit.
Well, the corridor is one of the fastest-growing areas in Iowa, and our roadways are certainly not designed to handle the large amount of car traffic. I believe that the corridor would benefit from a wide, corridor-wide public transportation system that is ran by one agency. To accomplish this, we would, it would require working with our neighboring towns of Iowa City, North Liberty, and Tiffin to set up, fund, and design the transportation routes that would best serve each of those communities. But it would open up our community of Corville to Tiffin and North Liberty to, for both work and with the Extreme Center. It would open them up to come and have fun in Corville.
Thank you. And Mr. Bedford? Public transit. Mr. Bedford?
Sorry, I keep losing that icon there. No, I agree that we need to expand the transit system and especially to accommodate the shift workers. We have a lot of people in this town, generally in this town, Iowa City, Corville, Tiffin, and North Liberty, that work at the hospital, work at different shifts, at different times of day. And the bus services of public transportation is limited. And especially in the directo and the COVID, there's even been some limitation in those services. So certainly, I believe that's important. Also, I think that trying to work with the other agencies, I know this has been discussed in the past, working with Iowa City and the University of Iowa and Corville. But there's three bus transportation systems separate. I know they cooperate somewhat, but I do think that we have to take a really hard look at either combining or certainly making it much more efficient and easy for people to get that full use of the transportation systems we can provide.
Thank you. Mr. Burrell?
Yeah, these are like all great ideas, but you know, one thing I've learned from running a business is every improvement costs money. So we just had the answer about being in debt, not being able to afford this, not being able to afford that. So first question would be, where do we allocate the funds from to improve this public transit system? And then what, where can we improve it without funding anything new projects? And like Barry said, it would come to like making all three entities work together to one. And so that would take a leadership quality, leadership skills, making sure everyone, showing everyone how they can benefit from that one universal system. And I feel like that's the skills I've learned, so I'm looking at people, it's like, hey, here's all the benefits we can gain from this, and then, you know, people love money. So like, it won't cost you anything, and you can see the improvement, and you're gonna make people's lives better.
Thank you. Ms. Saitzinger, you'll be first for the next question. What role can the Corville City Council play in increasing affordable housing options?
Affordable housing is a very difficult and complex issue. As city council, we have to go to our citizens and find out what they need for housing, and then we need to work with the landlords to help provide it. But there's no short, easy, quick answer as to how to solve this issue. It's just gonna be a long, a long process.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford? Affordable housing.
Well, affordable housing has been a problem for some time. I mean, people who are under Section 8 oftentimes are having problems getting into affordable housing. And then when they do get there, you know, they're frustrated at times. I do know that the city of Corville helps to administer owner-occupied grants that they've been able to obtain for reparations, I mean, not reparations, but repairs and restorations of property. Some low-income tax credits, that's been positive also. But I think we have to continue to explore what else is out there. How do we, how do we actually help the individual people to be able to get into these houses and apartments and such, and help them actually succeed in doing it? And that is gonna take dollars, as Nick just said, and we don't have the dollars right now. And maybe we should have, but we have to find a way to get those dollars and at the same time be progressing and trying to find out how to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Burrell?
Yeah, I kind of touched on affordable housing a little bit earlier. My biggest thing with affordable housing is I've applied for it before. I've seen how it works, like it's great, but it's great if people have something to go with it. If we just do affordable housing and we still don't develop skills, give them opportunities, give them a chance to like better it, it's just kind of a band-aid over the problem and we're having the same discussion in four years. So Washington, other League of Women's Voters, again, it's affordable housing every four years. So what's the question, like, hey, what can we do so we don't have this question in four years? Which, is it realistic? Maybe, but no one's ever really tried. And that's the type of thinking I think we need to take to it, is hey, let's develop some educational programs. Hey, let's develop some job skills. Let's work with businesses to help get these people jobs. Take that county sales tax, take 25% of it, you know? 25% is a lot, like, it's a lot, seven figures you're talking about. We can develop back into our community and help these people that need it more most and help their life skills.
Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I have lived in a mobile home community, a subsidized apartment, a duplex, and just moved to a single-home family last year, or a single-family home last year. And yeah, I am here today because those options was available to me when I needed them the most. And I want, you know, everyone who lives in Corville have the same, have the same chance that I have. I believe that housing is a right, and every single one of our neighbors deserve to to live in a home that is safe and affordable. And as a city, we need to protect existing affordable housing option, and we also need to invest in new affordable housing projects. And if we want a future in Corville to be accessible to all, we need to make affordable housing a priority, whether it's working to get Section 8 people the housing that they need and working with private landlord to make that process easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mr. Bedford. What are your views of the role of the Corville City Council in increasing intergovernmental cooperation throughout Johnson County?
Well, I believe that all the governmental agencies within, or the governments within Johnson County need to cooperate. I believe they do in a general way. Certainly, there have been times when they have difficulty agreeing. But I think that starting, you know, bringing things up that need to be brought up. I also think that, you know, initiating some of these talks, pushing some of these issues to force us to get together and become more efficient is extremely important. Duplication oftentimes is very inefficient. And I think we can do better in working with Iowa City, Johnson County, Tiffin, North Liberty, and trying to come together, whether it be working on transportation issues, maybe working on affordable housing in the area, dealing with some of these bigger issues that really are regional. Nick mentioned the sales tax, and I know that's been tried several times, but keep trying to try and come up with other resources that maybe we can use.
Thank you. Mr. Burrell? Intergovernmental cooperation.
Yeah, so like Barry just said, with the tax, one of the big reasons it doesn't happen is because there isn't that cooperation between Corville and Iowa City. So that's a huge thing that like I became aware of, and I was just like mind-blown. I was like, why can we not get this done and understand how we all sit here and speak about helping these people? We all pick these parties, we all wanna do these things, but we can't agree on this thing that's gonna help thousands of people in our community and thousands of businesses? It's like bringing a different perspective, a nonpartisan perspective, where the goal is to find a benefit from the right side, left side, and say, hey, you know, small business, small business and success of our lower-income communities are not separate ideologies. Instead, they're intertwined, and we understand that. We can make this work for everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen.
I think there is a lot of collaboration happening locally, and I would hope that they continue to talk routinely, especially during COVID. But there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of potential collaboration for childcare, for housing, for transportation. We need to find a way to share resources and make the resources available to, you know, Johnson County, to everyone in Johnson County as a large. And I am eager to meet with, you know, the other city and county leaders to start planting and making progress on the collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Saitzinger, intergovernmental cooperation?
First, I'd like to address this 1% tax that everybody keeps talking about. Any tax that we would seek to put on the citizens, I believe should go to a vote to the citizens, and therefore, I don't see how that it really pertains to intergovernmental cooperation. Because the government agencies can agree to tax the citizens, but the citizens may not agree that we should tax them. But going, going, addressing intergovernmental cooperation, it just starts with communications, talking with them, listening to them, and then finding the middle ground.
Thank you. Our next question, I'll begin with Mr. Burrell. How do you see the city of Corville addressing today's environmental concerns?
Oh, good question, right? So a big thing you could do, you could look at solar power, wind power, all that good thing. But then again, it comes down to showing people the benefits of everything, of how that can benefit the community. Then you have two sides that might not agree. And then again, what we need is strong leadership to bring the two sides together. Like, I know I'm harping on a lot, but a lot of the stuff we need is just like, take a little bit of this idea, take a little bit of that idea, let's blend this, let's make this work, let's make the environment a better place. Let's add, like, let's add one more wind, one more solar, then slow progression. Like, slow progression is the key to change, because if you change all at once, you're gonna create resentment. But if you do it one at a time, I think you create a long-term change with people.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen.
The climate crisis is real. Just travel 30 miles north of here, and you can see the devastation caused by the ritual that happened just over a month ago. And here locally, we also seen some of that. We'll see more storm, more flood, more drought in the years ahead. And it is time for Corville to be a statewide leader in the urgent fight against climate change by developing a bold Corville Climate Action with a diverse community task force. We can start with some basic action that will have a positive impact right away, like offering coxide pickup of organics that will, and developing a second and more accessible recycling center that will accept glass and offer single-stream recycling. Our waterway is also important, and we need to continue our support for the Clear Creek watershed pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Saitzinger.
Can you repeat the question?
I surely can. How do you see the city of Corville addressing today's environmental concerns?
I believe the city of Corville could go a long way in addressing environmental concerns if they would encourage green building in their new buildings. There's a lot of grants out there for this green building, and encourage retrofitting green with the green building. Because, you know, green roofs, solar power, wind. These new, there's many examples of new buildings that almost power themselves. And if we would encourage that from our developers that we work with, that would really help address and show that we care about the environment.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford?
Well, I know that over the years, the city of Corville has addressed some of those issues, or tried to at least, in the things that they've been doing. Some of the green roofs, trying to work with ecological consultants and all. I like the idea of putting, bringing together people from various disciplines to discuss how we can best deal with those issues. It's easy to forget those issues and just say, we'll deal with it later. I don't think we can deal with it later. I think we should address it. We need to get good input. We need to educate people. We need to let people know what really is going on. And there's a lot of misunderstanding out there on both sides. And then there's anger, and then there's dollars. And dollars, unfortunately, are going to rule some of the things we can do. But I do think we need to be focusing on that. I think we need to be working on that. And we don't wanna wait to start working on it. I think we do need to start working on it now to find out what our solutions are, how we can encourage people to go ahead with it, and then see what we can do.
And finally, Mr. Burrell? Environmental concerns?
I started off. I started it.
Mr. Burrell gave the first response.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I was looking at the wrong. Getting late. So we come to the time for closing statements. The time has gone quickly. And now each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. And we will begin with you, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you to, again, to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to engage our community in important conversation tonight. Thanks to my fellow candidates, Mr. Bedford, Mr. Burrell, and Ms. Saitzinger. And thank you to everyone who take the time out of their busy schedule to join us. As a community, we must do everything we can to revive our economy. The first step of this is defeating COVID-19. And that's require new thinking and new solutions to support all of our residents. As we plan for the future, my highest priority is to collectively create a Corville that put people first. I have been a problem solver all my life, and I know I can apply these skills to ensure our local government make decision that benefit all of Corville. I believe my history and vast experience working with people from diverse cultural and economic backgrounds give me a unique understanding, compassion, and insight into the true and often unseen needs of our community. Our leadership should reflect the community it represents. As city councillor, I will bring a new and needed voice to the discussion table that has been missing for too long. It is time we change that. If you see my vision for a better Corville, where we prioritize people-first development, where we take bold action to advance racial and economic justice, where we improve community mobility, strategize a plan to fight climate change, I humbly ask for your votes on or before September 29. I want to hear from you, so please reach out at hi@corville.com. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Saitzinger, your closing remarks?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for hosting this forum and to my fellow candidates for joining me this evening. My name is Heather Saitzinger, and I'd like your vote on September 29.
Thank you. Mr. Bedford?
Now I'm okay, I guess. Now, I'm okay, I guess. Well, I just want to say that I do thank the League of Women Voters tonight for sponsoring this, I thank the other candidates for being part of it, but I also will thank the other candidates for running, because it's obviously that these people care and they want to serve Corralville, and so I'm grateful to them for putting themselves out there, just like I am trying to do. My priorities for the city council are threefold, at least my primary ones, recovering fiscal stability, cultivating community trust, and advancing social and racial justice. I think those are very important, they have to be done. I think there's many other things that have been brought to the table tonight that are also really good ideas, and we should continue to work on those as we can and during the same time, but I think these are three very important and imperative items to cover. I also think that I bring a unique set of skills to the table. I admit that I've been in the city for a long time, I'm the oldest one here, I don't think that's necessarily bad. I have a lot of experience in problem-solving, conflict management, dealing with people and listening. I think the executive coach certification has really helped me in listening to people and trying to solve their problems, and help them to solve their own problems. And I also think that people who are listening tonight need to be well-informed, so I encourage them to go to my webpage, it's bedfordforcorralville.com, my Facebook page is @bedfordforcorralville. I have, my email is out there too, and ask questions, hold me accountable, convince yourself whether, you know, you should vote for me or not. But I do ask for your vote on September 29. I believe in Corralville, I love Corralville, I'm dedicated to Corralville, I want Corralville to be the very best place that we can live, I want to have people be proud that we can call Corralville our home.
Thank you. And Mr. Burrell?
Cool, I want to thank everyone, League of Women, other candidates, it's fun, definitely a learning tool for me. You know, I'm really excited about this opportunity, not only to bring a sense of diversity in terms of race, but a diversity in terms of thinking, perspectives, understanding the complexity of issues underneath, like what we think a solution, take it a step further and fix that, and we fix the systematic outcome of it. It's the same type of thinking me and my business partner did to take a struggling business, turn it around, flip it, and have a thriving one. It was that same level of thinking that kind of like allowed me to build relationships with officers, people of color, everyone, had building that bridge with people, understanding our emotions. Understanding emotional thinking is what leads us to this divide between people, and controlling that and finding empathy and grace with different ideas, then building a bridge between those ideas. So my biggest thing is like, when people look at me, I don't want them to see like diversity in my race, I want them to hear me talk, hear me think, and see diversity in my perspectives, my thought process, my ideas, and understand that's the diversity that Corralville needs to thrive in the future.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates and to the city of Corralville television staff. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and on the website of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County at lwbjc.org. It will also be cablecast on Coral Vision, check their website for scheduling. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Special election is scheduled for September 29. Please vote. Thank you.